For future viewing on YouTube, it is on tonight via Zoom and live on cable channel. Can I get a motion to open the playing board meeting?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyhow, can we introduce ourselves, please?
Steve Bouchet, member, the dividend member.
Mark Francois, chairman.
Ryan DeChamps, member.
We are missing one member tonight, but we still have a quorum. All right. Minutes. Did everybody here have the opportunity to review the June 22nd minute set where two to you?
I don't see any. I don't remember getting.
You didn't get them? Oh, it's actually there's like one here each year, there's like two paragraphs. Can you just take a quick scan of it?
Sure. Were you absent?
I was.
Says that you're present and absent.
No, I was present at the June 22nd meeting. I was absent at the May 25th meeting that we discussed those minutes.
Okay, misunderstood what this means.
Yeah, I wasn't at the May 25th meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes with one line correction. Under the CBE meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Fifth line down, row of bushes, not bushed.
Got it.
That change, I make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
You have the motion, you have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyhow, I will have Paul make that correction and then sign again. Okay. Moving on. There's no correspondence to review. Next, can I get a motion to open the public hearing portion of this meeting?
So moved.
Second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Beautiful. We have three articles that are going to go to town meeting. We're going to go over those tonight briefly, all in depth. We have a town administrator, Jamie Kelly, here, and we have selectman Wonar here as well. If there are any questions that need to be directed at them, that they could possibly help answer. Also, we have stormwater agent online and possibly even the conservation commission chairman, Ryan DeDetti's, I'm not sure if he's up there, but possibly. The first one that we're going to go start with is the special permit time limit. This one is Article 11. I am going to read, we have a few amendments from town council, so I'm going to read the amended version. Special permit time limit to see if the town will vote to amend the Kuschnitz zoning bylaw, section 3.4, special permit requirements. Article 13 zoning of the general code accepted by town meeting April 22nd, 1996, and the most recently amended, the 7/28/2022, by inserting the following text after the second sentence. A special permit lapses if not exercised within two years from the date of the grant thereof. A special permit may be extended by the special permit granting authority for good cause shown for up to two years or take any action relative thereto. In a nutshell, that's Article 11. What I'd like to do is, I'd like to go to the residents, the audience on Zoom or here in public, get some feedback, discussion, and then the board will deliberate after and take everything they say into consideration. Is there anybody out in the audience that would like to discuss anything regarding Article 11, the special permit time limit? Okay. Is there anybody out in Zoom that would like to discuss anything regarding Article 11, special permit time limit? Only once. Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Please.
There's a typo. It should be Article V11, R-I-I-I.
Article 8 as, okay, V-I-I-I would be Article 8. We'll make that correction.
It does say it in two sentences down, but the bold print is incorrect.
Basically, in a nutshell, I, the state originally had two years on for special permits. Sometime during COVID, the town changed it from two years to three years, which we weren't aware of it, and we didn't have any time limits stated in our bylaw. So that's basically what this is, is to keep it at the original two years that we had, and it also gives the special permit, whoever grants the special permit, the authority to extend it for a year or two or take any other action relative thereto. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Just, just for clarity purposes, this is covering all special permits, not just solar permits?
All special permits.
And we have the option to, whatever amount of time we choose to, it says up to two years.
Correct.
So we could grant six months, a year.
Correct.
Okay.
For an extension.
For an extension.
Correct.
Yep.
I will say that most other neighboring towns go with two years. That is the norm.
For the original or for the extension?
The original.
Okay.
So this is just locking down what other towns are doing rather than the liberal three years the state decided to throw down everybody's throats. So I'm in favor of the article moving forward.
So my options are to take a vote to send this to the selectmen.
You've got to close the public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Close the public hearing.
Then the board deliberates.
I'm sorry, okay.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Can I get a second? All in favor? Any more deliberation?
I'll make a motion to endorse the article as for town meeting.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyhow. I'm going to go, oh no, I am not going to go out of turn. Oh, yes, I am. I'm going to go out of order and go to the next bylaw, which is... Can I get a motion? All right, so I came out of public hearing. Can I get a motion to go back into public hearing? So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This one is for Article, sorry to be with me for a second here. Article 13, Stormwater Management Bylaw. There have been no changes by town council that I'm aware of. This is what was put in the town article there. This meeting is held in accordance with chapter 48, section 5, to consider the following warrant article. To see if the town will vote to amend the Kuschnitz zoning bylaw, section 3.4. Oh, I'm reading the wrong one, my apologies. My apologies. This meeting is held in accordance with chapter 48, section 5, to consider the following warrant article. To see if the town will vote to delete all present language of Article 4, Stormwater Management Bylaw.
That's four.
Oh, nine.
Nine.
1X, nine. Stormwater Management Bylaw of the Town of Kuschnitz. General bylaws are replacing said article in its entirety with new language. The accompanying documentations are available for inspection at the town clerk's office, Parting Way's building, 130 Main Street, First Floor, their regular business hours. Thank you for the correction, Mr. Kelly. Again, I'm going to go to the audience. If there's anybody here that would like to discuss or bring up any comments, concerns, anything regarding Article 13, Stormwater Management Bylaw?
Do you have a copy of it?
I probably do.
Thanks, Dave. We're good. I just wanted to get it with you.
I got so many drafts and so many copies up here, I'm confusing myself. Well, you look over that. Anybody out in Zoom land that would like to have any questions, comments, or concerns regarding Article 13, Stormwater Management Bylaw? I want to take that as a no. Bob, you can chime in anytime if you've got any questions.
I'm good. I just wanted to see that there was an actual document that we're referring to.
Yep. So if there's nothing from the public, there's nothing from Zoom land, I'm going to make a motion to come out of public hearing, so then the board can deliberate and possibly...
Move on us?
We're going to deliberate. No, you don't deliberate.
The board, public is common. And then you close the public hearing, the board deliberates.
Can I get a...
I was going to skip.
No, I'm going to skip.
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, the board, gentlemen, you had a chance to look this over. Any comments?
I have numerous comments. I looked, well, first off, I don't know what is changing from what it was and what it is, or what it's going to be. There's no red lines, no nothing, so I had to look at this as a blank slate. To be honest with you, I, first time this came through the town, I don't think I even looked at it. So I looked at it, a clean slate, and some of my comments may be picky uni or whatever you want to call them, but I think they have, they have some meaning. My first comment goes to impervious surfaces. Impervious surface, any surface that prevents or significantly impedes the infiltration of water to the underlying soil, pretty straightforward. This can include but is not limited to roads, driveways, parking areas, and other areas created using non-porous material, pretty straightforward so far. Buildings, rooftops, structures, artificial turf, and compacted gravel or soil. That pretty much covers everything. Compacted soil means the whole town is impervious.
Right.
That makes no sense. It's illogical. That means the, your compacted loam is impervious, that's not true.
I agree.
I just, it can't be so, I read that and I could go for compacted gravel, but soil in general is just covered everything. I just think, or soil should be omitted because it doesn't... I'm not, I'm not buying it, you know?
Change, change, change the language.
There's also a lot of artificial turf that is not impervious surface. It's made for the water to go through.
And it usually has rain.
That's why you use artificial turf, so the water can go through it and it doesn't puddle up. So I agree with David that...
Two things there don't make any sense. Otherwise, we're just like classified everything as impervious. It's illogical.
And not to say that there isn't artificial turf, that isn't. You know, you get the regular green rug from Home Depot, it's going to puddle up, but if you get the, the right stuff.
Right.
It goes through, so.
Yeah, that means our golf course, you know?
Yes.
And you could have something that's, that doesn't make any sense. So, you know, who knows where it came from? I don't, I'm not picking on anybody, I'm just...
No.
These bylaws get generated from other towns and...
Or the state.
Or the state, yeah.
Now, if this board wants to request...
Language change?
Language change. It will then go to the board of selectmen who's a proposing board.
Okay. The next thing I noticed, but it looks like, I don't know if it was corrected, the definition of a person. The copy I had.
Definition of a person?
Yeah. That was, it is redundancy and I don't know. Looks like it was changed in some, some manners, I'll skip past that. Redevelopment. First thing it says redevelopment is development. Doesn't make any sense either. Implies it's new development. I don't think that should be in there.
For what?
It's redundant.
I think that definition came from town council.
Redevelopment is development, I guess it is, but...
I don't, it's legal.
Okay.
I'll check with his, I'll check with him, but I know that I asked a similar question.
Okay, like expansion. Expansion is new, new development. Head north of the house.
All I know is...
It's not redevelopment. I mean, some of these things, I'm just...
I asked about how an original could be a re and was told it's a term of art.
Term of art, okay. Vernal pools, a couple pages later in definitions. I think it's really important to add at the end of the sentence. The sentence is fine the way it is, but it has to be certified by the DEP or specifically natural heritage. Otherwise, it's not a vernal pool. It's just a, it's a wannabe, it's a wannabe pool.
So certified by DEP and/or...
And/or, yeah, natural heritage.
Okay.
It's important because you may have a property that, if something's not certified, then it's not protected. And once it's protected, it creates this huge buffer zone of protection around it.
I have one next to my house, next to my property.
And it's one that, it may dry up and never fall up again. I mean, it might be a one-time event because of a wet season, now some people's property is taken away.
Uh, I, mine was certified 30 years ago, so I understand it. And I will recommend that to the board.
I'm wondering about, you tell me a town council chimed in on this one, the waters of the Commonwealth? All waters within jurisdiction of the Commonwealth, including without limitation rivers, streams, lakes, ponds, springs, ponds, blah, 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 blah. And waters of the United States as defined with the wet federal.
I would...
What waters of the United States are in the Town of Kuschnitz?
I would bet that this is a DEP definition.
Okay.
I would bet, but I don't know. It looks like they are wording.
Okay. Yeah, it concerns me that, you know, people developed this.
And then mandate the towns to use it.
Yeah. And I don't, I don't know what that's supposed to mean as a resident of the Town of Kuschnitz.
Do you want me to ask town council about...
Yes.
Whether the wording is valid from waters of the United States on?
Yes, I would.
And if he says it's a term of art, leave it in, otherwise?
Strike it. Sorry, I'm reading from my phone, so... Section 6, regulations. I have a concern regarding section 6 in its entirety, and I'll explain why. Stormwater authorities shall adopt and may periodically amend regulations, rules, or written guides related to the terms, conditions, definitions, enforcement of these procedures administration by law by majority vote after conducting a public hearing and receive comments. That's a dangerous precedent. In other words, this, this bylaw is approved by town meeting, and once it's approved, they can create any bylaws, any regulations with that? I think that's very dangerous.
That's, any constituted board with that authority, the Commonwealth has that. If they're regulatory, if they're allowed to make regulations, they have that authority under this procedure.
But do we have to approve it that way? Why can't everything that's changed go back to town meeting? And the people have a say in it.
Oh, I can ask town council on that.
Otherwise, I'm, I'm just, I'm telling the people in the audience that from my experience, I've seen certain boards in certain towns run amok and take away people's rights as landowners because all they have to do is hold a hearing, listen to the audience, say, oh, thanks, and then they just move it along and they created bylaws that are just so restrictive. It's a land taking. And, and that is my experience, and I just think, and this is no knock to anybody serving now in the commission. I'm telling you that in the future, you could get that type of group that gets together and, and you need a permit to mow your lawn.
And it might be the general court has given everybody that authority.
My question to town council is, do we have to do it that way? Or can we just strike it and make it so that any changes have to go back to the tax base? I mean...
I'm, I'm not paid to be town council. I do know that as far as with state boards, it's almost word for word.
Mm-hmm. That's the problem I've always had with a wetland bylaw is, once it's approved and the towns, you get extremists, they come in on those boards and they, they build so many bylaws into the thing, it, it's...
Welcome to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
I know, but we're in a position where we can do something about it.
Not necessarily.
So I'm asking the question to the general...
I'll ask them, but not, it's, I'm not saying you can, you can or you can't, but with this, the authority that the general court holds on how any board does regulations, and they pretty much set the procedure. I mean, it's been a legislative prerogative for probably 50, 60 years. So I'll ask them if that can be omitted and regulatory, or even language to, if regulations, prior to regulations becoming effective, they must be approved by town meeting?
That would be satisfactory. Anybody else has anything to make a change in any time?
I read through it and I agree, a lot of it is above and beyond me.
My take on it too.
A lot of it is, is above and beyond me, so I'm glad that we're, you know, conservation's taken over. This is more in their realm. As far as I read it, it looked good to me. Obviously, your professional career, you, you deal with it a little bit more than most of us.
Mr. Chairman, just so the people at home know, the reason that this change is before this board is that the existing bylaw has this board as the stormwater authority. And the delegation by this board to another board to act as this board's agent was how things were done in the past, I understand, from town council. And as such, because you are technically the stormwater authority now, this had to be heard by your board.
Correct. I understand that.
Under additional prohibited pollutes?
How far beyond where we were?
I don't know, we don't have numbers on these pages.
Uh, how about letters, letters, numbers?
Letter A, section 3?
Section 3, backwards.
No, I, I keep flipping.
Letter A, section 3, 2 of Article 2?
The top of the page says additional prohibited, prohibited pollutes. So it'd be Article 2 discharges the municipal separate storm system?
Okay. Prohibited activities exemptions is A, B, C, D is exemptions. Section 3, additional prohibited pollutes?
Yes.
Right there.
Okay. I find section 8 laughable.
I understand. It's in all of them.
It says it's against the law to go and, go walk your dog in the, the woods in front of, take a poop.
Without, without carrying a plastic bag.
But he takes the poop next to the deer poop. But he takes a poop next to the deer poop, you know, violates the law, and horses are exempt, even though they poop 20 times more than a dog. I mean, why do we have ridiculous stuff like this?
Welcome to Massachusetts.
I'm just, I mean, I had the comment on it, because I think it's, it's utterly ridiculous. But my concern is B. Doesn't the town use sealants for roads? And the roads drain into the MS4? I mean, how do we have this in our own bylaw? Prohibits us from maintaining our roads?
That one came down from the state.
But if we're doing it as a town, we shouldn't be voting on it, not being able to do it.
Right, because this says that you can't seal your own, I can't seal my driveway because my driveway drains into the stormwater system and the road that I'm on, which is a public way. But does that mean that the town should stop doing it?
I'm not well-versed in what coal tar-based driveway and pavement sealers versus others, and with polyaromatic aromatic hydrocarbons. I'm not a scientist.
I know, but I think we ought to check on this, so we don't stick ourselves.
I know, I know, it's part of a, I will check to see if it's part of a state brag. I think it is.
And can the wording be changed so that we don't stick ourselves from being able to seal our own roads?
Not if the state mandates it.
Then they should just outlaw sealing roads?
Well, they probably will. I will check with him and see. It's way beyond my scientific knowledge.
See, I don't know if this is something new, or something that was voted already. I really don't know, but I can't, because I have no, this law made available to me two days ago.
It doesn't look anything, from what I've looked at the previous one, it doesn't look anything like that. And I know that DEP or, is it NEPA or something like that, had a great deal to say about what does, and it...
I'll use a way to, here to use a way to seal a coal tar-based driveway, pavement seal.
I can't believe we approved this whole document, honestly.
Well, back to the pet ways. Why, why is it that if you got a service dog that's exempt?
The legislature decided that.
Oh, Jesus.
On a number of things.
Yeah, I know, I just said, you know, dog, I don't care if you got a service dog or if you had your own dog, he craps on the sidewalk, pick it up, you know?
Well, I think they're assuming someone might not be able to see that.
Understood. However, service dog comes in, they inform, so not just seeing AI dogs.
All right. Just be thankful it's not a service element, elephant.
But if you got a cat, don't matter.
Well, let's just, let's just ask town council if we can change the wording.
What service dog, or service whatever, is a, I know a defined term of art from the Commonwealth.
It's become a joke.
Well, that...
It really has.
It depends, they're going back to service dog, or horse, or something else, and that's it, they won't allow...
It says right in there, a service dog or a service animal.
Yeah. But, but the certification program won't allow, like a goldfish.
No, but my, my point is, uh, it isn't for blind people anymore, you got people who cry that they can't go to sleep at night if they don't have their dog, and now they can circumvent anything they want, and it's ridiculous.
General Court?
Except it does say registered as such, so that's, that's the catch. Most of, most of those people aren't, they're calling them service dogs and comfort dogs, whatever, and they're really not registered as such.
Brian, I'm gonna ask, what are you good with this one?
I'm good with it, good.
Uh, Steve, I'm gonna look at you, say, is there anything else you need to ask or request, um, any changes?
No, I think I'm, I think I'm good.
Mr. DeViglino, I'd like to scan a little bit longer.
He has brought up a lot of good bounds, boy.
Yeah, and he's gone, looks like he's gone through with a fine-tooth comb, which is great.
All right, so the next one I have an issue with is B. It says under, moving along, stormwater management land disturbance, article three. And that's section B. So it says, B, the following activities are exempt from the provisions of section 1A. Any activity that would disturb an area less than 40,000 square feet. That's good. Then it says, this exception may not be applied for contiguous properties that may have been subdivided or attributed to multiple separate owners. So, I guess my issue with this is, if you have somebody, um, like, that has a lot of frontage, and they carve out a bunch of ANR lots, this tells me that they gotta do a stormwater management plan, if they carve out a lot and they sell it, and they carve out a lot and sell it, now they're past the 40,000, because you gotta cumulatively apply it. That makes no sense. Either it's a single-family house law, it's a single-family house law, you know what I mean? And there are a lot of properties that have multiple ANR lots carved out, like on Perry Hill Road, one after the other, after the other. You seem to know what makes, we had that person come in with, oh, we're gonna do another lot.
Yeah.
So automatically that triggers the second lot to have a stormwater permit? It, it just, it doesn't make any sense. Either you have a single-family house law, or you don't, doesn't matter when it was carved out, you know? Um, that's, that's concerning the way that's written. And I know that's, that can't be, that means, can be mandated.
Did I not hear you say 40,000 square feet, though?
That's, that's the, yeah, that's the...
So all single-family house lots, unless they're in the village, are lower than 40,000 anyway, you have to have 60,000?
Disturbed.
Disturbed, I understand, okay.
And in the bylaw, you have 60,000 required, you have 40,000 of upland. So, you know, a lot of lots are developed that way. You have one acre of upland, if you disturb, pretty much the whole acre. As long as you stay under 40,000, and you're under the acre, you're okay. This is saying that if somebody has 10 and an R lots, then he's gotta file a stormwater permit, so he gets the second one. I, I don't, I don't agree with that. Does this make any sense?
They should all be treated as individual lots, but not as...
Correct.
Once they're subdivided as whole?
Yeah, they're individual lots.
First guy gets the freebie, and the second one's gotta file a stormwater permit, third one's gotta file a stormwater permit. And if you think about it, it's just for a house and a driveway, it's not, you have to build a roadway, you have to build a parking lot, you have to build a big shopping mall. It doesn't make any, so the 40,000 is good, but...
You, you still gotta stick with the, the impervious surface of the building code as well, so...
Yes.
Fifty percent.
Right. So what I'm asking is, they strike that second line.
I'll ask town council.
Second sentence.
Yep, from this.
We're looking to really just, you know, make it reasonable for property owners to develop.
I'll ask town council.
Okay.
Put it on the list.
That's why this board surprise was sought.
Number six just struck me, I remember this coming up several times. If you build a wall, a retaining wall, less, less than 12 feet are exempt, but more than 12 feet, you have a stormwater permit. I find that...
Yeah, it's a little troubling.
Yeah.
You know, let's put a storm wall in front of the house, and you gotta get storm water.
Yeah.
That's just... Yeah, I don't know if that needs to be there.
I just think it's, it's just, it's an overreach, it's an overreach of just more regulation over more regulation. So my question is, do we really have to have a permit for a storm for, for, you know...
For a over a 12-foot wall?
I'll ask town council, and then I'll ask the selectmen, they, they proposed it, they can amend it a little bit.
That sounds like any home that has a lockout, basically, and needs a retaining wall.
It's just a nuisance, you know, to have to pay that fee and go have a public hearing, notify a butters, so you can build a retaining wall 25 feet long? I mean, it's just, it's just, we're really regulated to death by the government and our state. This is a local level, there's gotta be some control here where we can make things reasonable, rather than unreasonable.
I'm not debating with you.
I'll tell you, this one, the next one gets me really bad. C, section C, next page. Review or permit, section two, all the way down, get to the last, second to last sentence of sentence C. Climate resilience. That word should be stricken 20 times, because we don't even know what that means. All that gives is some, some person in charge the right to make their, you know, some wacky decision on a property owner. See, because it says, may also address relevant environmental considerations, including without limitation protections of aquifers and sensitive water bodies, and prevention of flooding. I don't know what's wrong with just putting that in there, and striking something that, who knows what it means? It's from one person to the next, what does climate resilience even mean? That's a new word that's being thrown out there to all these towns.
Well, besides towns...
They want you to plan, like in a flood play, and they want you to plan for 2050. There are some people saying...
Read everything that's coming out of Boston.
I know, but we gotta stop some of this crap, like now, when it's right in front of us, we have an opportunity to strike this, because somebody could run with that and put somebody through some painful steps that, you know, as a consultant, some people will say, I don't even know what to do with that.
Put it on the list.
When, when we're in the room listening to the engineer who designs this stuff saying he doesn't know what it is, we shouldn't make laws saying that we gotta do it.
The Commonwealth does so, they give the governance office, it's here right now.
The town shouldn't, the town should say, no, we're not gonna go along with what you're...
You don't have that option.
Well, then, then they need to make it a law, not these guys.
Because then you lose state aid.
Bye. Bye-bye. That's, that's how I feel, I, I agree with these guys.
Twenty one, twenty one million dollars.
I gave up any right of any money during COVID, anything, and went to work every day, because it's all crap, you can't depend on the state.
I'm not, I'm not debating, I'm just saying that.
I, I question how much this, this has to be exactly this.
I agree, and that's why I'm taking the questions back.
Because, you know, one thing, I know that there was a firm that developed this for us, we paid for it, this, this, but a lot of this stuff that I'm pointing out, it's not in other towns, but why are we special? Why do we gotta be the worst one? That's what I'm asking you, it's just, you know, this is...
I would, I would be glad to take it back to town council.
I don't think this is properly vetted the first time, um, so...
We will, we will, I mean, all very good points, I totally agree with all your points, we will list all those points.
I have one more.
And send this one more with it to town council.
The, the last paragraph has to be reworked, because it, it, it doesn't work at all. Upon completion of the work, no later than two years after completion of the construction of older stormwater permits, shall submit a report, including certified as-built construction plans from a professional engineer, surveyor, or certified professional in erosion and sediment control, certifying that the project has been completed in accordance with the conditions of the stormwater management permit. As-built drawings must be depicted, must depict on all site controls, both structural and non-structural design, to manage the stormwater associated with the completed site, close construction, stormwater management. Any discrepancies with the approved permit plan shall be noted in the cover letter, submitted to the report, and as-built plans. A certified professional in erosion and sediment control.
Ching, ching.
I'm not sure what that means, but they are not qualified unless they're a registered land surveyor, stamping as-built plan. Um, so I don't even know where, what that means, what that comes from. Um, the certified as-built construction plan can only be signed by a registered land surveyor, and as far as completion of the project as a whole, be professional engineer. An erosion control specialist is not an engineer or surveyor. This whole paragraph is a mess, doesn't make, and I don't know who wrote it, but it's, it's poorly written, and it doesn't, it, a lot of it, it doesn't make any sense from a professional standard, it can't be done that way.
If it didn't have that certified professional erosion and sedimentation control, and would it make sense?
It would make better sense. I could live with just striking that, make it easy.
Yeah, because I think it's kind of a necessary, I think it's a necessary thing to have the...
I don't even know what...
Yeah, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying...
I don't even know what that is.
Who's gonna do what and what, it's just, as a professional, you should know anyway, but I don't, I don't know where that came from, but...
I don't even know what it is.
It sounds like somebody that certifies the installation of an erosion control and can certify the, you know, the installation that was done right, but they can't certify an as-built plan.
So if we take it out?
Yeah, let's take it out.
Because you're the engineer, I'm not, I don't know what it, who can certify?
I've never even heard that term.
No, it almost, it almost like the guy installing it, if you gotta, you gotta put a water, you gotta do all kinds of...
Yeah.
The more, the more letters in alphabet soup, the more difficult it is.
Yeah, I apologize for being a pain on this stuff, but I...
I would, I would rather have, I would rather have input and get it, have the selectmen present something that's, uh, makes sense.
Yeah.
Since this was presented twice, and the selectmen didn't put it forward, and then we sent it to town council for review.
Well, this, this is what happens with a lot of this stuff, they, they try to make new regulations, and they sneak something in there nobody's paying attention to, um, that makes it very restrictive, you know, and, and just not even practical, you know?
So I will bring...
The protections are there for a reason, but they'll intentionally sneak something in to, it just make it, like I said, not practical and very, or very, and are very expensive, too. Anybody trying to build a home or, or development of any sort?
Well, that's why the board asked me to come here tonight to discuss it with this board, because this board had the authority in the past.
Okay.
So, uh, could we, if all the changes are accepted, could we have a, an endorsement subject to all changes being accepted?
To what the selectmen have to say at the end of the day, too, you know?
Well...
It's, it was brought forward...
Sorry, Mr. Kelly, Mr. Chairman, through you. Please, please. As members of board of selectmen, I wasn't here to talk about this, but I will. I mean, we've, as Jamie said, we've been at this twice already, we scrapped it twice, seeing that planning board is responsible for stormwater, and you've delegated that authority to conservation, you know, perhaps, a better, I mean, there's a better process, I don't know. But I think if there's something that we can work out now, that would be, you know, a good first step.
I agree. Like I said, I read through it, um, to me, it all looked good. As I read, well, most people know Dave is an engineer, he deals with this all the time, so I totally respect his opinions and questions on this, and everything he's brought up, it sounds pretty valid. Let's put this in front of council, and get their requests. Let me take a quick vote. Uh, do we agree to make a motion to endorse this article with changes and set forth to...
With, with the changes being accepted by the... With the changes being accepted by the board of selectmen. Changes put forward by this board.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. I mean, I think if no change is made, I I would rescind my support of the article because I think it's problematic.
But that's why that line-
We got a motion?
I'm gonna make a motion to move this forward, to endorse this with the stormwater management act as per the changes that have been brought forward by the-
Recommended by the-
Yeah, recommended by the board. I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, two down, one to go. This is the biggest. All right, so we were out of public hearing. We need to go back into public. Can I get a motion to go back into public hearing?
Sure.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, Mr. Kelly, I'm gonna wanna fall back on you because there have been a few changes. So now, there have, there've been a few changes in different areas from council. Do I just read what was put?
Yeah, and then what, and then you just say with-
What the, where the changes were.
What the changes recommended.
Were, okay.
And then you asked for public comment.
Yep. Thank you. This meeting is held in accordance with chapter forty-eight, section five, to consider the following warrant article. To see if the town will vote to amend article eight, VIIII, zoning bylaw for the town of Akushnet, general bylaws by adding to section three. Use regulations, a new, use regulations, a new subsection, three point, three point seven. Special resident development dash over fifty-five housing. The purpose of this special resident development, special for, are to grant relief in the form of increased density to encourage housing needed in the town of Akushnet, such as providing alternative, alternative housing for a maturing population, providing a type of housing which reduces residents' burden of property maintenance and which reduces demand on municipal services. For the purpose of this bylaw, the term special resident development is defined as a residential development of multiple dwelling units configured as attached or detached, single-family dwellings on a tract of land in single ownership. The accompanying documentation are available for inspection in the town clerk's office, parting ways office, one thirty main sheet, first floor, Darren Wainwell business hours. Okay. This is a long one and there's a lot here, so I'm not gonna go through the, all, every page. This has been posted for the past two weeks if anybody has been wanted to read it. Before I go to the audience or to Zoom, a couple of the changes that were made recently by council. And please, at any time, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Kelly. Right now, there's basically two zoning bylaws in here. One with sewer, one without. If you are in an area with sewer, it was five, a minimum of five acres to a maximum of fifty acres. That has been changed to a minimum of three acres to a maximum of fifty acres. Also in here was the way that the formula was done to decide how many dwelling units could be on an acre. There was a formula of basically multiplying the acreage times the number of bedrooms. That would let you know how many dwelling units.
The density.
The density. Thank you. That has been changed now to it was four, so for example, two acres times four bedrooms gives you eight bedrooms. If you got a maximum of two bedrooms per unit, you only have four dwellers. Did I do that correctly?
I don't know. I know, yeah, we need some clarification exactly on how just-
Well, the recommendation is to-
Take that, to remove that.
And to go with units.
Instead of bedrooms. So now, instead of four bedrooms per acre, it's three units per acre.
Now, there's two alternatives. It's, the number's three.
Three.
Where you got, you got two alternatives.
The second, yeah, but the second one is the unit one.
First one's the original one. I think it was still.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. The yellow is what was original?
Right. So I'll read the new one. Maximum number of dwelling units permitted. The maximum number of residential buildings within an SRD shall be computed based on the maximum number of dwelling units. The maximum number of units per acre of buildable area shall be determined by multiplying the buildable area, expressed in acres, by the number three. The maximum number of dwelling units shall be contained, shall contain no more than the maximum number of bedrooms and shall be distributed by the developer's discretion between one or two bedrooms per dwelling unit. In order to achieve the maximum development as allowed under the above measures, the applicant must demonstrate compliance with all other standards identified in section C.
So basically, this translates and rather than we go on to with the number of units, which will be multiplied by the maximum number of bedrooms per unit, it's still two. So that makes it, that makes it a total of six.
Say that again?
Six units per acre rather than
Yes.
Four.
Correct.
And the other issue is the let me get the terminology right. Origin, it's for residential village, residential lay and business commercial. It excludes business village and industrial. Business village was excluded because that is the high-density area and you're going to have to do work on that one to figure out how you're going to do it.
Right.
Probably for presentation in this place.
Right, and I agree with that. That was something that, in that area, to find a minimum of three acres to do anything is, is, will be difficult. So that's something that's gonna need a little bit more vetting, a little bit more discussion to discuss what we're gonna do and what kind of bylaw will encompass those districts. Just because of how compact it is. So we will revisit that one in the spring.
I know that Mr. Wallner, Mr. DeVignan and yourself, Mr. Chairman, have looked at this
We have.
Very carefully.
We have.
Mr. Chairman, if it's okay with you?
Please. First of all, I wanna thank you for even considering this. This is a long time dupe, right? We know, we've known for a long time that over fifty-five, how we handle housing for our aging population is really a critical need. We know, I think we know a number of people that have lived in town their whole life, wanna remain in town, but can either no longer afford where they're living or don't want the burden of home, you know, of having to deal with a large lawn, lawn, large tract of land. And there's really no place for them to go. And so taking on this this bylaw, it does, it does a few things. First of all, it puts all of the power in oversight in the hands of the town because we're going with a special permit. We could have had the option of doing it by right, but we felt that that wasn't a path to go forward. If we allow it by right, then we lose a lot of control in the process. We don't wanna do that. Right? So it's a special permit. Number two, as you can see, something that might be controversial, be struck, we'll take that up at another time because we know that in these areas of town, that would be a right fit, right? What we've left here. Secondly, if we don't, lastly, if we don't act, anybody, a developer come forward with a forty B and we lose absolute total control over the process. So by putting something forward like this, which I think is very responsible, especially it addresses the over fifty-five population, I think this is a, I view this really as crawling before we run. This is a good first step. And, you know, I think it's really important for the town. And, you know, I'm glad the board of selectmen have looked at it as an important issue. I'm glad that the planning board views it as an important issue. But at the end of the day, it's up to the, to the voters, it's up to the taxpayers. We work for them. All we can do is put best, put forward our best plan, which we think fits. And I hope it passes. And, you know, like with anything, it's not like it's written in stone. We always have the opportunity to tweak, make it better, but to do nothing, I think would be irresponsible. And, you know, with it being over fifty-five, there's an opportunity, there's an opportunity to generate revenue, new growth for the town without adding to our school population. And, you know, we've been talking about we, an issue we have in town is the inability to pay our employees a competitive wage. Because we, but the issue is we know we don't have a lot of commercial development. So this is a piece of that puzzle. It's not the only thing. But I think we've gotta start stacking reforms to bring in as much growth as possible so that we can play, we can pay our employees, we can provide the residents with the services that they need and they expect. So that's what's motivating this. And I, I hope it moves forward.
I, I agree with you. And I think like the previous article, there's gonna be some comments and concerns here from the board. Is there anything?
One other point I just wanna make again for people who are watching, that I mentioned oversight. So if you turn to the third to last page under reports from town boards or agencies, there will be ten different set of eyes on this. Like if a proposal or developer were to come forward, there'd be a pre-application meeting. And then there would be planning board oversight, board of selectmen, board of health, conservation, board of assessors, historic district commission, building commissioner, fire department, highway and police. Ten separate sets of eyes to make sure that we get it right.
Good point.
That may have answered my next question, which was gonna be, as most special-
I'm actually supposed to go by the rules. Can you get up and identify?
Absolutely.
Please.
Thank you. Bob Brown, I guess acting in capacity of a few this evening. I am on the I'm on the housing authority, so, you know, over fifty-five and housing and everything means something to me. But I'm chairman of the board of appeals as well. So I was wondering if the board of appeals was the granting authority of the special permit, but it sounds like they're, they're not in the mix at all on this one, so just-
You actually brought up a good, bring up a good point. I actually asked Dave that same question and I gotta look into it. I was under the assumption that the planning board was the overall authority of all special permits. But I watched one of your meetings the other night and you were discussing an extension to a special permit that you had previously approved. So I got, I I am still learning in this position and I need to go in and find out exactly which special permits this board is responsible for and which special permits the board of appeals is responsible for. Again, I thought we were responsible for all special permits, but-
I thought we were responsible for all of them too, so I guess.
I guess it depends on what, you know, like once it goes through this process and if somebody feels that they did not get what they were looking for, then it would revert to the board of appeals and then, I don't know if that's considered a special permit because it goes through that person? You know what I'm saying? That process.
So in an example, if we deny a special permit for whatever reason, then they can appeal it to the board of appeals.
Right. And it essentially becomes a special, like the final product is a-
Still a special permit. But to put on an new apartment, it requires a special permit. I've never seen one go to the planning board, do they?
It depends on, it depends on the grant of authority.
Correct.
Who does a solar installation? Who grants a special permit for a solar installation?
We do.
Because you were granted that authority.
That's correct.
The proposed bylaw is granting the umbrella authority to the planning board.
Similar to a solar, but all other special permits are generally for use relative to bylaws, which is board of appeals. And that, each town has certain things designated, delegated to the planning board. Most of it goes to the board of appeals.
And again, I believe that housing and fifty-five and over is definitely a use. And we actually just granted one on Garfield Street a couple of months back. So that definitely fell within our board and I, I, I honestly, in this, I love that he said there's ten sets of eyes on it because I think that's how it should be done. But I believe that it should go to the planning board and the building department, who is controlled by the selectmen first. So because you guys have access to the engineers, you have the, the building inspector who's supposed to have the codes and see everything, but then I think upon your recommendations, it could come, should go to the board of appeals because we look at it as, does it fit the neighborhood? Does it, you know, and that's basically what we do with all the other use things we do.
But we can look into that.
Look at it and say-
If it's a friendly amendment, that's fine. It's fine by me. Just make sure we got-
Yeah, that was something that I-
And for no other reason than exactly what David said. I like that set of ten eyes on it and eleven, I don't think could really hurt, but-
No.
I'm also, also with your board handling it as well. I'm just, was a question because I haven't seen it happen.
I understand. I was, I had similar confusion as well.
We can add, certainly add zoning board appeals to that, reports from other town boards.
Yeah, I guess, I guess we should look into it, right? Because a developer would have, if they're not denied or whatever, they have to have a recourse.
Yes.
And I would imagine if the ZBA is I'm just thinking out loud here, that they would have to be removed from that process so then they could objectively look at something that comes before them, right? If they're judge and jury at the same time, then-
So basically, it would go to these ten eyes and the only time it would go to the eleven set of eyes is if it gets denied from us for whatever reason. And then they would be the final.
Again, I'm just surmising that.
No, I, I kind of, that's how I thought it was as well.
Well, the housing authority, because the-
I have a question. Hi, I'm Espinola. So the fifty-five and over proposal, is that something that the town's gonna buy land or outside it can come in and buy the land?
Outside.
And develop it?
Outside.
So it's not gonna be just for Akushnet residents?
No, it's not a housing authority or-
Okay, okay. Well, then my next question would have been, is it under government control? Now-
By this.
Not once it's been-
With the presidential terrace currently, that's Akushnet, right? Oversees that? Right? And like, we used to have a list?
No.
I can, I can help with that if you don't mind.
Please.
I am on the housing authority.
Yeah, okay.
We are very regulated by state regulations.
I know.
It is not for Akushnet residents only. It, no, it never was. It, Akushnet residents have one step above in certain directions, but we actually have to go to the elderly for SDH then. But then it's handicapped veterans and there's a whole list of criteria.
Yeah, I know.
Being a resident is only one of them.
Well, born and raised in Akushnet. My mother's been in there for many years. Excellent facility. I know somebody on the list. It's been going on almost three to four years.
We've been putting people in a lot. We've been-
But what we've been told-
A lot of turnover, but we have to, the state tells us we have to put the handicap there. We have to put a debt there.
I understand that, but why do we have a list if we're not pulling from that list? Like I said, I have, I know somebody who's number one on the list. And they, it's been three or four years. So that's why I'm asking.
They have to need this in qualification.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, this is off topic.
No, that's fine, it is off topic. But my question was, so it's not a government facility where it would be a cushion of residence? It's just a developer can come in?
Correct.
And in essence, put anything really, right?
No, that's why we get this. The developer has to come in, he can put in so many per acre. There can only be two bedrooms. It can only be so high, it can only be two levels. There can only be two units per building. There's a lot of setbacks, criteria for this.
Do they own the unit or they rent it?
Either or.
Either or.
They can sell the unit to an over 55, or they can rent the unit to over 55, or they can do a combination of both.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So, that's-
Now, this was a change made under the NAC. It must be over occupied, and that's literally what it says. It means you buy it, you occupy it.
But that was changed by council. Owned or rented, but must be over 55. And Mr. Chairman, I think part of the reason for the Planning Board being the special permit authority here, it's, the whole issue of this type of development involves a lot of design issues. And that is usually where the Planning Board comes in. It's open space, it's common buildings, it's frontage setbacks.
Roads.
Roads. The roads within, whether the drainage within, whether it's a, if it's not sewed and watered, what, what type of design would be for a private septic system? I mean, that is, I think that's why it's here, is because of the design aspects.
Any other questions from the audience regarding this article? We're good? Is there anybody out in Zoom that has any questions that they'd like to discuss regarding this article? Okay, so, we are going to
Close.
Close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to, what will the call?
Second.
For favor?
Aye.
Aye. And can I get a motion to reopen regular?
To call for the board to do the deliberation.
Thank you.
So moved.
Thank you. Second, for favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now, hoping all of you had a chance to look this over. Like Mr. Kelly had mentioned, I've gone back and forth with him on multiple different questions. That's why some of these that were changed by Town Council. If any of you have any questions, and I just want to point out a couple of things for the record. One of the biggest issues, and I know there's been a lot of talk on social media about a lot of different things. I try not to pay attention to. But unfortunately, people are saying that there's wording in here that's going to be more than just two bedrooms, that there's, you know, three bedrooms and for condos and whatnot. I want people to understand that this is strictly over 55. You can have a one-bedroom apartment or a two-bedroom apartment maximum, not three. And again, the zoning of the two levels, and like I had mentioned in the beginning, the, the amount of dwellings, the amount of units per acre. There, this is, there is nothing in this packet that has anything to do with condominiums or three-bedroom units that I've been reading a lot on, where a bunch of kids are going to come in and they're going to overwhelm our, our town and, and put a burden on our schools. A lot of that's been going out on social media. This is not designed for that. On the contrary, we are looking for over 55. Do over 55 people have kids? Yes, they might. But this is not designed to be sold as condos to families that will burden the town. I want to make that very clear. That's one of the biggest points that this board is keeping an eye on.
I'd like to say something before we talk about the bylaw. I think the general public should understand that our town already has something in the bylaw that allows 55 and older.
Which they voted on?
Which the Board of Appeals approved. It's in there, and it's only one sentence. There is no criteria for control for proper development. This bylaw will substitute that one line with a bunch of criteria that tells folks how they can go about doing a development the right way. Or at least it's a starting point, better than one line. Because right now, it's like the Wild West, the way it's written, and it's in there. It's allowed use.
It really does. It just allows us to say you can do what you want if we don't mind your plan.
Yep. And you don't even have, it overly scrutinized.
I appreciate the board I have, and that's not the way it's handled, but it could be, correct.
I mean, look, here's why this is important, right? What have we been spending the last year and a half on? Trying to figure out how to regulate solars, solar farms that have run amok, right?
Yep.
So to give a landowner an alternative, right? For instance, you look at the Meadowbrook Driving Range, right in the middle of town.
Yep.
Had we had something like this on the books, perhaps that landowner might have said, a nice reasonable over 55 might have been a better fit than what we see there now. Right? So instead of being reactive, let's be proactive. Have something that, again, has a ton of oversight, and see what we can come up with.
Agreed. Steve, you have anything that you might want to?
And the last thing I just said, just the last thing I want to say, as we do this stuff, right? I would just urge to not let perfection be the enemy of the good. Because sometimes, whether it's towns, government, if it's not absolutely, absolutely 100% perfect, then things don't go forward. And I would argue, we're not, the only thing, the only way you find out if it's either right or wrong is to see what the market dictates, right?
No, you're absolutely right. I mean, and, and we, like, like the Business District, the Business Village, it's something we're going to discuss in further depth and more detail and revisit in the spring, which I think is necessary. I agree with everybody in the room. We need more oversight on this, and we need to get something in. Now, can this be tweaked? Absolutely. Will, do people have a little opinion here, a little opinion there? Absolutely. Just like the, the stormwater. Town Council will have a few up here as well. Steve, give me a fresh shot.
First shot. I'm looking for the change over here, looking for something in red that tells me this stuff's been changed. And we want to draft it out. This is the first time I see this draft, it's tonight. Okay, so obviously there were some changes that were made, but at one point-
The changes in this draft you have tonight versus the prior drafts are the, from five to three.
Yep.
You know, taking bedrooms out where there's the wording option to go with units, and taking out the Business Village zone.
Okay. So apparently there was another, another change in here with the guy in, on Rockabye.
Rental.
Where was that? Please, just so I can find it.
It's on the H, H1. C standards, number two, age qualification. It says the, one, two, three, fifth line down. Second page.
So before it didn't say or rented?
It didn't say or rented, and it didn't have the word also then either. So it's or rented and also occupied by at least one person, 55 years of age or older per dwelling unit.
So I got, that's where I got an issue. It's, it's, in most situations like this, when you're actually creating an owner-occupied, aka condo, for lack of a better term, you usually get a development, there's usually a percentage of the the overall development that's, that's allowed. If you go to Boston, buy a condo, a certain amount of percentage of the, the, the units are allowed to be rented out. The rest of it needs to be owner-occupied. I think there should be some sort of, we're not going to build a unit, everything's going to be rented. I think when you rent, if it was, basically you're creating an apartment house is what you're doing. And that, as a whole, is going to lose, it's got the potential of losing touch, or staying well-maintained. When you have a condo unit situation, homeowners association, you have criteria that's set in place that have things that be met in that case. So I think there should, and I'm, I believe there should be a maximum amount of rental in that, in that particular place right there. If you're going to allow rental, there should be, you know, 25% or whatever it may be, to be, they could be rented.
There's one issue with rental that was brought up. And I'm not sure how it would do with the percentage. And that's if someone is eligible, owns the unit, is way over 55, passes away. You have a family member that is 52. Under the way this is written, that family member, rather than being able to move into that property when they turn 55, would have to sell it by the time they're 54.
Okay.
So.
Kind of lost me there.
All right.
No, I understand.
An estate has two years to sell the unit.
Okay. Or occupy, or occupy with a family member 55.
Or occupy with a family member 55 or over. So this gives a little bit of flexibility in that situation. I don't know how that would, you know, we're looking at all sorts of what-ifs here. But if that, with the maximum of 25% rental, I don't know if that would ever push up against that. I mean, that would be a hell of a crystal ball we'd have if we could predict that.
Steve, I understand the concern about rental, right? But by the same token, I think one of the things we're trying to address in town is if you're a homeowner
Yep.
on the, on the back, on the back nine.
Right.
On the, you're in the 19th hole. And you're like, all right, I want to sell. I want to catch my breath for a year or two. I don't want to have to buy something else because I want to give my money to my kids. I want to rent, which would be kind of a similar situation to somebody in a housing authority. We don't want to be, like, so restrictive that we don't create that. So I would just say, like, I agree with you, a percentage, but maybe it's like, shall not exceed X% of the overall population, right? So whatever the numbers, maybe we're saying the same thing. But I just want to make sure that we're not creating the same problem that we're trying to address, which is somebody who's, doesn't want to be in homeownership anymore and has a place to go still in town.
And there are people, there are people that might not be able to afford the purchase price of this, of one of those units, but they might be able to afford to rent it. My, my biggest thing is it's got to be over 55. So if, if a developer comes in, this is just my opinion, if a developer comes in, puts in 50 units, and, and 25 of them are sold, but 25 of them are being rented to a, to an elderly person that's 55 and can afford the rent, not the purchase price, to me, it's the same difference. And it, it might actually be more financially beneficial for the developer to be receiving rent for the next 50 years than to just get a lump sum and be done with it. I don't know the dollars behind it. But you got to give also a little something to the developer to maybe entice him to want to do the project. Again, I don't know the numbers. But as long as my opinion is it stays over 55 and you're not filling it with a young family, it kind of hits the same purpose. Hold on one second, you had your hand up.
My question was on the rental. I'm very familiar with condos, and I, I get his point. When, if you have condos and they're sold off to people who want to rent, the properties can go downhill quick. But with the over 55 and stuff, I was thinking, I did hear in the beginning that this could be both sold and rental. But I was thinking that there would probably be developments of 20-unit things that stick with one owner, and he rents them all. Is, is that not allowed?
No, that could be.
That is allowed as well.
Unless there is a-
Percentage put in there.
I was, a percentage put in there.
So what you're just saying, what you're asking-
I'm thinking this, basically, there would be two totally different sets of housing for the over 55. They'd be, I go out and buy 10 acres and I put whatever the maximum is, 20 units, 20 bedrooms, 10 units, something like that. And I keep ownership of that for the next 100 years and rent out to, you know, the whole thing. I definitely think the whole thing would stay rental.
Look, we have that now. We've got Clem's Way. We've got mobile, we have mobile parks, right? I mean, so we've got that.
So, so there's that. And then there's the other thing more like, he's talking about where you take a condo thing, you know, a developer comes in and builds it, and there's 20 units, and they actually get sold to 20 different owners. And when you do that, and then them 20 owners rent out, that does create an issue. And I understand that, Steve. I, I-
But there would be a comment, so, so here's the other part of my thought. Within the homeowners association of like what you can and can't do.
And that states in here that they all, they would have homeowners association.
Usually the association for something like that would be where you would talk about the ownership.
Right.
One, one thing you have to remember, whoever is the special permitting authority has the authority to put orders of condition in place.
So you're saying if there's a, if there's a homeowners association, that homeowners association only governs the people that own it and not the people that rent it?
No, it governs both.
It would govern the whole thing, but how do you put a homeowners association in for a whole, a whole development of rentals?
You could, as I said-
If it was owner-
You probably wouldn't approve that, Steve.
It's an orders of, you create the orders of condition. That's why the, the whole special permit is, process is designed for you to see what's best for each plot of land where it is in the town. And one of the other advantages to this whole concept of over 55, which you hear in numerous towns, I'm sure Mr. Divinian has heard it. I've heard it in my area of the state because we've gone through this. There are not enough housings, there is not enough housing stock for young people to buy in the town they grew up in. Part of the reason for that is the maturing population is not moving out of their homes because there's no place in the town they want to stay in to go. Well, if you give that maturing population someplace to go, and they move out of the house that a younger person could move into, then especially if it's even a family member of theirs, a younger family member, then you partially solve that problem where- of theirs, a younger family member, then you partially solve that problem where you want a continuity of families in a town who know the history of the town and know the, what it means to be a member of that community, and this kind of helps that.
I would just say this, Steve, and I think what you're saying is valid, and going back to my initial opening, we're crawling before we run, so if what it takes initially out of the gate to figure out some type of percentage on rental units as a first step, and then...
And see what the market...
I'd be, I'd be amenable to that, right? Let's put it in there, and then if, you know, if, like, nobody's doing these things and they come back to us and say...
So here's the other thing, and it's, here's a perfect guy for me to ask about here. I, I think the answer has been answered. If the developer's coming in and saying he's gonna own this thing forever, then you know they're all rentals and you allow it that way. If they're gonna be sold off, then you say, well, that's fine, you can sell them off, but we want owner occupied units, and it sounds like you got that.
So it's on a...
What are you talking about, either building apartment buildings?
You can set it through the orders of condition.
Right, that's the whole thing. That's the whole point, Steve.
I'm still there, just because I think, again, it's easier to crawl, okay? Amend it, change it if there's no market for it.
Yeah.
It's just because, Bobby, what's the cost to build a home right now, per square foot?
Almost over three hundred.
Almost three hundred, so try to, try to put in, build units like this, okay? Spend that kinda money, three hundred dollars per square foot for rental apartment, what are you, what are these people gonna pay? Probably more than what they're paying sitting in their own home.
They might be willing to determine that.
They might, they might be willing to, that's why I'm saying, the opportunity's there to, you know, put a percentage out there and see what these things are gonna come out to, because it's all gonna be on a developer, and I think I had a conversation with somebody else, and he said, yeah, it's nothing stopping a developer from putting in gold toilets and gold faucets and jack the price up and send it up through the roof, and still make it, and still make it, not even realistic, unaffordable. And I don't think affordability...
We're talking about affordable housing, we're talking about housing for fifty-five and over.
But also, Mr. Chairman, again, like, all right, so we're talking, Steve had a question about a percentage of rental units, so I don't know that we wanna be in the business of determining like what the house should look like or whatever, so I would just say, Steve, if you have a number, you know, a percentage in mind, get it to us.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five?
Twenty-five is probably where I'm at right now.
You know, I mean, I would like to just get some, like, I know that sounds like a number, but let's get a research of that, you know, like, for instance, let's just say down the line, we got the Russell Memorial Library, somebody says, you know what, we might want to turn that into some housing, but the only thing that really works is to rent, you know, not to sell off individual units, but to turn it into a rental.
That's a little different from what we're talking about.
Right, but I'm just saying in general, like...
I, I think...
I know what you're saying, David.
I think for the market, you're gonna have to do the reverse, not the maximum rental.
The maximum...
The max, how many have to be owner occupied?
Okay, so let's change the verbiage around and just say seventy-five percent.
Have to be owner occupied, okay, that's fine. If that's, if this way, if I may, I...
I don't think that would work.
I think, I think that's totally wrong. I don't think there's any reason why one guy can't own the whole entire unit. That is the best case scenario for keeping up a nice place, is some wealthy person building a building complex that everybody rents from. And I agree, they're two totally separate things. One, you're talking about a condo thing, the other talking about how, apartment complex. There's nothing wrong with a good apartment complex where everything is rented. By, by what you're trying to do takes that away, I think that's a very bad thing to do.
And I think it's, well, I go back to the statement I made. You're issuing a special permit.
Yep.
You set the orders of condition. The orders of condition should be individual to the plot of land that's being developed and the proposal that's coming in from the developer.
I couldn't agree more. He's given you that authority, use it so that you can look at a proposed design and go with it.
I think I'll say this, based on what I'm hearing here, if, if a developer and applicant comes in front of us, and his background is owning developments like this, okay? You have all the surety in the world, it's like, I have no intention of selling it because I own three more of these up in Upton and here and there, and you wanna go see them, I'll show you photographs, I'll give you a video of it, and then you're like, geez, why wouldn't we want that in our town?
So, so the other thing I'm looking, the other thing is taxes, revenue from taxes, having one unit with, having a one single housing unit with, with four apartments and whatever it may be versus condo units, each individual condo unit is taxed separately for its value, rather than collecting taxes on one unit of its, whatever that value is for that multifamily. To the best of my knowledge, the tax, you get, you'll get more tax dollars out of using condominiums than you will, and again, it's, it's about feeding the need, and it's also is part of creating a little bit of revenue for town, you know?
Well, if you're in an apartment building, then you're gonna get stuck on minimal taxes, but if you have individual units as an accessory, you'd be able to tell us, yeah, you're gonna, the value...
Yeah, I wanna collect more from condos than an apartment complex, but we're still gonna collect for the square footage, for the acreage, for the everything, I mean, it's not gonna be so far off that it's not worth having in town, and again, we're, there's two sides of it, there's one, we need elderly who just need to rent, as David said, and have their last five years in town, and we got people who want to be, you know, anybody in the room not close to fifty-five, you know what I mean? We could, we could all buy this, we could all buy a unit, you know, in a couple of years and move in, but it doesn't mean we have to, but if we buy one, it's gonna be, you know, hopefully for fifty-five to seventy-five, eighty. If we rent one, it might be for a little, but they are two totally different projects, but I think your bylaw covers both, and I think, as he's saying, when you come in and you have your order of conditions, it allows you to do both. It allows you to say, to, I don't wanna throw names out there, but I do know developers who put up great rental properties, and you want them guys to wanna come in and put it, and that will be high value on the tax roll because it's a nice building. And then same thing, you also wanna get, you know, maybe you can get into a nice condo, two bedroom for two hundred fifty thousand, I mean, with, with the price of houses being five plus for these little shacks on Holiver Avenue, it would, they can sell, give that to their kids and, you know, move up, exactly like he's saying, kind of a circle of life for cushioned residents, you know, not being forced out of town, being able to be still with their kids who they passed their house on to, and that's ownership, and I agree with you with the ownership, there's no, but I believe there's a place for both, rental units and ownership owner, and I believe it sounds like Mr. Kelly is saying that you're gonna have the authority on what type of building it is when you rent the permit, so I think it's a win-win.
And it also gives the option of the people that might wanna buy a condo in the south and have a rental up here that they can live in because they're a snowbird and they're going down there, and this is Taxachusetts, so they're going down there for six months and a day, and then they're coming back here when it's abysmally hot down there.
Yeah, I thought about that myself.
Very soon.
And, no, the idea is there that, I don't, I wouldn't, I don't think I wanna own in two different states, you know, and we need to keep roots here for a reason, family, kids, grandkids, whatever. I think that renting is, is...
When it comes to the condo complex and your board's there to govern it, that's when you slap the twenty-five percent rule on, not in the bylaw itself, but as a condition.
That was some good conversation with, looking at the time, we have a lot to go over, do we wanna leave the language in as is and we take it as block per lot, project per project kinda situation, and we determine what it is at the time for the order of conditions, and we leave it the way it is? Or do you wanna add wording into this?
I prefer to leave it the way it is, 'cause I think we have a flexibility to control the development.
I agree with that.
I think this is strong enough to, that we can control it, and we can control covenants, assistance of town council, covenants can basically, you know, control the property.
Steve, I'd like to put this on the bed before we move on.
Yeah, you can. I prefer some sort of language in it, and I understand what everybody's topic is, believe me, because I'm, I'm sitting there in an affordable position myself at some point, you know, probably within the next ten years, I understand that. However, I just don't think the rentals, even the rentals will be as affordable as, with what's out there right now, so, especially when you start talking massive dollars per square to build, but the option's there, I guess, if somebody's got the, got the money to do it.
My point, my last point on the matter would be, if you wanna make it more affordable, then we gotta lax the density. The density is too low. The more you consolidate and you keep things crossed down for the developer to consolidate and leave more open space on the outside, you have to start looking at other projects, you know, Mattapoiset has one near the police station, and the community, the buildings are tight, massive landscaping, the place is beautiful, and they've got a ton of open space around it. By condensing the development, you reduce the amount of road infrastructure, therefore you reduce the cost.
I'm not, I'm not in disagreement with that at all, because, especially when you get into, again, large, you got sewer and water, that's, that's, that's the big thing, and that's where that density thing, to me, could change.
But I would argue, sorry to interrupt, but I would argue like that would be a tweak down the road, right? Because we've put forward again, is we wanna be conservative.
Agreed, agreed, I don't wanna spin off on a tangent on that either.
So do we wanna just keep this the way it is and kinda keep an eye on it, and if we need to tweak it, we can tweak it?
I'm afraid that if we put in some sort of percentage, we're gonna handcuff the guy, the impressive guy that maybe come in and say, I wanna build it and own it, 'cause I have tons of other ones, and if we have a percentage in, how are we gonna allow it? If we're gonna put a percentage in, then let's put a line at the end that says, "A waiver may be granted at the discretion of the board." That covers everything.
But one thing you want with this is you want synergy, you wanna get someone in here to build the first one.
Yes.
And then you can look at what's happening, and then you can see, this is to put it on the books and get it done, and then after that, as Mr. Loanar said, there is no perfection in this.
No, it's...
It's to get it on the books, get it done, and then start to see if you have to move a little bit here, move a little bit there, add a qualifying statement somewhere, and have it all work, but you need that first, the developer, to come in here and do an over fifty-five, so other developers will say, "Cushnut's a place that I can do this type of work in."
Okay, let's move on, we'll, we'll quickly circle back.
Can I go next?
Please.
Track size? I don't have any issues with the track size, three, you know, no less than three, there's more, I have an issue with the last sentence. Frontage, and I know this came from Rochester, so when we keep talking about this, I don't know why they got this in there, but, "Frontage shall be a minimum of fifty feet on a public way, and projects exceeding thirty dwelling units shall be a hundred feet on a public way." My issue with this is, we have retreat lots in town that have forty feet, some have fifty, and you're enabling a retreat lot, which already got a break on the frontage, so now it'll become a multifamily development? That should say, "The frontage shall be a minimum of a hundred and fifty feet," because that's what our break, our subdivision, that's what our zoning says. You don't have a hundred feet of frontage, a hundred and fifty feet of frontage.
You can't even build the house, but you can build a big...
Right, and there's no sense, it's illogical, so I don't think we need anything for the greater than thirty units, what relevance is it? As long as it has the frontage, it has to be three acres, right? So what I'm suggesting is we say, "Frontage shall be a minimum of a hundred and fifty feet, and then strike, on a public way, and then strike the rest."
Fair, it's a good build.
I'm with you. And the next, I, I wanna just hear what everybody has to say on the density, just, just a quick, you know...
I'm with you, but my, my opinion's right, I think, I'm a huge supporter of low-impact development. Doesn't mean you can have more, but it should mean that you don't have to develop as much and spread it out so much, because open space and park area and all that is worth way more to me than space in between buildings, you know? Low-impact development, put as much as you can in a smaller area as long as they have the bigger area that's gonna stay over.
Yes, same on a square foot, you're just gonna, you're gonna say you're gonna...
You still need to have, you can only put so much on your acreage, but you don't have to use all the acreage to do it, you can compact it.
So with that being said, I'll just keep this simple, what I suggest is, we accept what's here, but we look at, like, Mattapoiset has some sort of density bonus formula, where you, you look at, if they preserve so much open space, they get a bonus for so many units, which...
Gotcha.
You know, there's, there's a way to, there's a way to give somebody, but we gotta look further into that, I know that they have some formula, and, and it's like, the more open space, you get a plus-two factor or something, and that would give them the, you know, the...
When you say this, we're, we're dealing with the red?
Yes.
All right, just so I'm clear.
No, I'm in favor of the red, not the yellow.
All right.
And then with that said, you know...
Yeah, the density thing, as you know, going forward, I think it's, wouldn't be unreasonable to say we could put four units in a building. Underneath the maximum square footage, we can put, we can put four units, and it already allows us to have two floors.
Right, and there's, and over here, configuring a building, it says...
There's an issue I know with sprinklers.
It doesn't matter, but that's up to the development to put them in or not, that's it.
People go with duplexes, because once you get beyond the duplex...
You don't have to do that, but it doesn't mean they can't, it shouldn't mean that they can't.
Correct, yeah, it doesn't.
But, so you wanna go with the red and then look, ask maybe conference with Mattapoiset?
Well, I'm, I'm saying...
Let me down the road.
It could be down the road, I'm just saying that there, there are more creative ways, and this is a good starting point, and there are creative ways to, potentially down the road, we can analyze, you know, some sort of density bonus based on open space.
I will. I was just giving myself a, an excuse for lunch, Mr. Lorenko and I, the town administrator of Mattapoiset, do lunch together.
If we go to...
Mark has a point on B.
Yeah, configuring a building, five, configuring a building, if you go down to the letter B, this is the second page, I think it is, letter B says, "Dwelling units per building, no building should contain more than two dwelling units." I say we, right off the bat, we strike that right off the bat, and...
Because if somebody wants to put a cluster of four, if they're gonna do three, they're probably gonna do four. It consolidates the cost. They gotta put sprinkles systems in, but that's part of the deal.
That's exactly it, and it's not that crazy, crazy money, 'cause they get, cities making them do it now with three families and...
We'll bring it back to the board.
Okay.
That's a good idea. I can ask this question, why, why can't exceed two floors? Why can't you have the first floor, and I've seen some nice condo townhouses, seeing in New Hampshire, first floor is the garage, and in the back of the garage, that's their storage space, that's their cellar, they don't have a full basement because they're in an area with high groundwater, so then the next two floors are the living.
That was the direction from the board.
We can look into that, as so long as it's not like three...
A tasteful.
But I, I guess I'm just thinking out loud...
Because when you put a clump together...
We don't want more than two areas of units, right? Because if you got three areas of units, now you've got, you know, a big thing, but if it's for parking or whatever, like, so long as people aren't gonna live there in a third level.
And like, a lot of places here have the walkouts that you had mentioned, that walkout was the base... basement, which is a drive.
So, like in New Bedford, near Paraffas, right? That, near the Bristol County Savings Bank, you know, like, there's, there's underground parking there, right?
Yeah.
Oh, right, right.
The old Thetts, right?
Right, so, where it says, "Nor, nor exceed two full, full, full-floor levels."
Of living.
Somebody could support a living space tonight.
A living space or something like that. I'll bring that back to the board.
Okay. Where is that? Because we still have a maximum, we had a maximum like a thirty-four.
Five, configure a building, letter C.
You gotta have a ladder roof.
It would be thirty-five feet probably anyway.
Yeah, yeah, it's thirty-five, it's in there, it's thirty-five feet, in the same sentence. It's just that you can get a, you can probably manipulate a garage under, within that thirty-five.
And depends on where that thirty-five feet's taken from, over one place and it's just basically.
Here's the thing, as you get older, you want a garage.
As you get older, you don't want stairs.
Well, true, it's a trip. It's a trip. Elevators are cheap now, they're not what they used to be, you know?
Look at that one. Yeah, that's a war.
Okay, moving on, turn the page, what do you got?
I'm up to page, I'm up to number seven, inter-relational relationships of buildings. I, I, the fifty-foot setback between buildings, to me, I'll say why it's illogical, because I can build a development right now, two lots side by side, and side setbacks fifteen feet. So, I can have two houses thirty feet apart, why, why do we have to have fifty? Now you're pushing out the development, making everything wider, and it's just a question, it just doesn't make sense from a zoning standpoint.
It was, when the board discussed it, they suggested fifty. And then they had the planning board at its discretion, they allowed twenty-five percent of the buildings to have minimum setbacks from each other of forty feet, and.
That doesn't make any sense to me either.
Twenty is plenty for fire code, plenty, plenty for excavation, plenty.
A lot of these developments you see.
But of course, you hear the people's TV next door.
But depending on where you put your.
But you see my point.
Your two-car parking on, on either side of the building, or whatever you're gonna have there, so you're gonna have a little bit of separation there, so you need another room to get two-car parking in between the buildings, unless you have a whole separate parking lot, but nobody's gonna like that, they're gonna want, they're gonna want to be able to. Or if you have garages underneath, it's a little bit different. Maybe that, maybe that should, some of that should be, again, we've got a, we've got some discretion written into my law.
I know that, I know that, I know that further on, it was also fifty-foot wide buffer between the development and public ways, between.
Oh, that, that I have no.
That we agree, yeah.
That's, the more you have buffer from neighbors and public, that's great. I'm just saying, if you can build two lot, you have two A and I lots, and everybody can build fifteen feet from lot line, that's a thirty-foot building separation.
I, I, I would still say that.
Just seems counterintuitive to making a more open space and it's just.
It would be, I wouldn't want to live thirty foot away from somebody.
But you can in town, every, on every single house lot. You go, you walk, you walk right to the end.
I'm just saying, I wouldn't want them.
Well, my house is set fifty feet off my left side, my neighbor's set fifty feet off my other lot line, it is what it is. I mean, what do you, that's the zoning setback.
No, you block that.
And again, but then right now, this is not separating the, the water sewer district from, from the rural district of town. So, I think that's something that needs, that'll, that'll need to be tweaked.
That's a down the road.
That's a down the road, so it's gonna be.
These are minimum right now. Design standards are part of what you're negotiating with the developer on.
They can't negotiate if it says they can't.
No, I said, these are minimums.
That's what I mean, it's wait, the minimum's. The minimum should be twenty or thirty, and then let them say, "You need more," not, not make it so they can't even allow it.
I think Bobby's got a point.
No, I mean, it's, I don't have, I don't have a horse in this right.
Tell them you can appeal.
I don't have a horse, I don't have a horse in this right, so it's between this board and the.
And I'm taking, if you've got feedback, I'll take it back to the board.
Forty's better than fifty. I, I'm suggesting thirty, but I'm thinking, if forty would be better than fifty as a minimum, that's a plus-ten-foot factor.
All right.
I mean, it just seems hypocritical that you can live in town thirty feet from your neighbor and build there, but.
That's the same thing, you live, you know, you're living anywhere in this area right over here, you gotta, you don't have fifty feet from your back of your house to the next property line. It's ten percent in, in this area, so if you've got a hundred feet, it's ten feet.
Yep, ten percent of the lot frontage if it's eighty feet or less.
Yep.
Okay, let's turn the page, we'll come back, they're gonna discuss the forty feet with the other two, John would.
Next one's eleven, parking. It's the end of the paragraph that I'm perplexed by, I don't know what it means. Additional parking in proximity to any clubhouse or other facility serving the residents in comp or guest parking shall be provided in off-street parking areas, provided that no single accessory parking area shall contain more than one-half space per residential unit in the entire project. Why? If you've got twenty units, you need overflow parking, you know? I mean, people have, you've got the holiday coming, right? And people are entertaining people, and you've got half a dozen people. That whole sentence makes no sense. Why, why are we restricting parking? I mean, does presidential terrorism have a problem, parking issue?
We, we just put in another parking law, because we, we needed more parking.
Yeah, I would, I would think one space per residential unit for overflow.
They should say one and one-half space.
One and one-half.
Space. I've been through that when I was on the micro, the same thing, went down in, over on the New Bedford Freetown Line. It should be a minimum, not a maximum.
So, you want to put one and one-half?
One and one-half space of one, yeah.
So, one and one-half.
Overflow for each unit?
Or creative visitors' parking area.
That's what I'm saying.
I think that's what this is, this is for.
So, one and one-half, does that work?
You've got twenty units, if you've got twenty units, it's giving you thirty additional parking spots for holiday, you know, I, I think that would be, and that becomes, that's sort of open space.
And what about, what about with the last sentence, "The adequacy of well-parking facilities shall be determined by the planning board, which may grant a waiver." Which may grant a waiver on the number of parking spaces.
As long as it's an out, I just, it just seems to be restricting the minimum, I would, yeah.
Minimum amount of parking spots is, it's either one or one and one and a half, I mean, it's.
Yeah, I mean, one makes sense, right? And that's, so if you've got twenty units, you've got twenty spaces.
Yeah. Fifty-five, you've got two kids, they, they show up, they, you only go, they have to come in half the carpool, will come see you and look.
That's what I mean, I just, I just wrote it out. Or block the street and ways in and out, and there's a fire.
Here's the deal, when it comes to park, but I'm just throwing this out there, when it comes to parking, so you got a minimum of one, and you could market, as the developer say, "Hey, this, this unit comes with two, two spots," that drives up the value of the property, right?
Sure.
Places.
But you need two, you need two, you need two car, you need two-car parking anyway.
But the ancillary lot is not assigned parking.
No.
So, if one family, one resident has five visitors, they can all park in the ancillary lot, because they're not assigned spaces.
But it should be at least a minimum of one.
So, instead of one and a half.
If you've got twenty units, you've got an official twenty parking spots.
This is restricting, it's a one-half spot per.
That's just a computation.
No, it's, it's, it's very clear.
So, do you want a one?
At a minimum, I think it should.
Or one, or one and a half?
I would say at a minimum.
I'll go, I'll go with one minimum.
One a minimum, but you gotta read this, says that no single accessory parking lot shall contain more than, I, I don't think it should say more than.
Should say, shouldn't have less than one half.
Less, less than one, one, less than one space per residential unit.
All right. The only thing I can think of is the original way this was drafted, they were looking at more than one ancillary lot.
Okay.
Well, that may not be feasible, depending on the site.
Yeah, agreed, that's why, why is the condition.
Can we, what, now that we're gonna move, change the word more than to less than?
One.
And then, at the end, put, planning board, and it says, "Determined by the planning board, planning board can grant waiver," does that?
Yeah, and one space rather than a half.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm on the next page, the very last word on, right below D, procedures. Town of Rochester should be stricken.
Where's that?
And actually, Wetland's bylaw should be strict, and that whole Rochester-Wetland's bylaw, because they don't have a bylaw.
All right, yep.
So, when you look at that sentence, all facilitated, also facilitating this meeting will be the availability of a plan which contains boundaries of wetland resource areas as defined in the Massachusetts Wetland Protection Act. End of story. I think as far as like, requiring them to do an abbreviated notice of wetland resource area building, I think that's the developer's call. I think demanding that is just a colossal waste of, it could be a colossal waste of money. I mean, they're not gonna flag a well and, you know, it has some ham and egg to do it, they don't know what he's doing, so they can come in here thinking they're gonna sneak, they gotta go to conservation, they're gonna get bagged, so it makes sense to have it done right from the beginning. It's their prerogative, a lot of times, developers, applicants will go and get that done, I don't think we should be mandating that. I think it's a, it's an, what you're doing is you're spending a lot of money upfront, or making the person spend a lot of money upfront, find out to get, okay, yeah, your well is good, and they're like, great, now I'm five grand to hold, I already knew it was good from the beginning, you know, because when they file it AnRad, it's two dollars a linear foot for the wetland line, minimum two, maximum two thousand dollar wetland fee. So, your filing fee is two grand, then you pay the botanist to serve, to flag it, then you pay the surveyor to survey it, that's a, that's a done deal. But then when you file an AnRad, the townsman are gonna hire, or they have the capability hiring a, a peer-review person, that's gonna cost another couple grand, you know, so you're, you're spending so much money just to, to get the wetland line approved, it just seems, early in the process, it seems like a, a nonstarter. I don't want to impede, you know, somebody wanting to come forward with a potential project.
So, you want to strike everything from the.
We got it.
Huh?
We got it.
You got it? Good, move on.
When you get down to application B, delineation, it's the same mantra, a delineation of the official wetland area boundaries as accepted by the Christian Concom pursuant to Wetland's Protection, Wetlands, Christian Wetland's Protection bylaw.
Let me tell you, mass wetland, mass wetlands.
It's the same thing, yeah, just to say delineation of the official wetland boundaries per the Massachusetts Wetland Protection Act, end of story. We don't have a bylaw, so a lot of that is, doesn't belong there anyway.
All right.
That's easy. You go to the next page, I'm all the way down to the letter E. The drainage calculations per the planning board should be subdivision rules and regulations. And at the end, and stormwater bylaws. Just clerical cleanup, I call it. The next page, J and K, I don't think we need those in our bylaw.
Natural and wildlife resource inventory approved by vote of the Conservation Commission?
I don't even know what that means. Unless you're building a development in a pond or in a well, and I don't know why you would need a wildlife resources inventory, I don't know what the heck that would.
Amen.
And then the last one is historical archaeological resources.
Amen.
Go to reports three, second paragraph, I think you should just strike that whole thing.
Review and write, review and written approval of the.
Of the concept of the proposal shall be obtained by, so we're asking the Conservation Commission to give us their written approval of the project before it comes before the planning boards? That's the concept, that they have, if they're in their jurisdiction, they gotta go for improvement. Same as the Board of Health, if they gotta put a septic in, they gotta go with soil valves, with the health agent, there's no need to.
Solid, amen.
Failure of the other boards, we're now three para, two paragraphs lower, thirty-five days seems long, have to wait for, I have to put twenty-one?
Well, you usually have, if you, if you have a board that decides they're only gonna meet once per month in the summer.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not gonna argue with that a lot.
I'm with you, I'm with you, you just have to hear it, okay.
You get things that are gonna go fly through that.
I'm all the way, I'm all the way.
Everybody's on vacation, isn't it?
No, you're right, you're right, holiday, yeah, I know, winter time, you get a snow event, done, I, I, I should've known that myself. I'm all the way down to the fee structure, and then I'm done, you guys can take over. Outside consultants, after, it says, "At the applicant's expense," I think we should be stating using fifty-three G funds, or fifty-three G.
What is that?
Fifty-three G is mass, mass law that allows commissions, planning boards to hire outside consultants and make the applicant developer pay for it, that money.
At the applicant's expense pursuant, pursuant to.
Fifty-three G.
Yep.
Mass law. Yeah, that's it. It's just a tag, that's the tool that allows you to tell them, "Well, we need twenty-five hundred bucks, we're gonna put it in account, and we're gonna."
Yep.
Outside of that, I'm, I'm good to go.
Okay, now I have fifteen things that I want.
They're your buying breakfast.
Again, I think you brought up a lot of great points, and, Mr. Wonar will go back and they'll present to the board and come back with some answers.
If, if the board accepts.
If the board, if the select board accepts.
Then we can go with an endorsement.
So, I make a motion, or someone make a motion to move this to the Board of Selecting and endorse, if they endorse.
They accept.
If they accept, excuse me, we endorse if they accept.
All they accept.
All our changes.
I think you, just to bring something back up, we, I think we were talking about two units per dwelling, I don't know if we.
No, we, we struck that.
Okay.
You're talking about.
That last page, right?
Okay.
Where you at?
Which, you struck it to what?
Oh, on, on this page, where it says, "Configuration of buildings."
Yep.
Which is like the second or third page, it says, on letter B, dwelling units per building, no building shall contain more than two dwelling units. Strike that completely out.
Five B.
No, I think we, I think we need to have a number in there.
I think that, again, comes back to the discretion of the board, if the developer.
We'll, we'll disagree on that, on that thing, but I think that's, I think we should have a number of a maximum of four unit, four units per building.
I'm okay with that, I'm agreeing with you, because you know what, you can get a, you're trying to avoid apartment building.
Exactly what I'm trying to avoid.
Yeah, so.
Dwelling units per building, no building shall contain more than four.
Make the two four, and we're good?
I'm, I'm good.
I think that's reasonable.
Were you just saying that the more that we can compact?
Yeah, but what they'll do is you, what you do is you have four, you have a double duplex, so you have a block of four, then you have fifty feet of space.
Thirty feet.
Thirty feet of space, and then you have another block of four, and then it'll.
About affordable housing, you stack, you're stacking units, and that's, that's gonna bring, that's gonna bring the cost down, it's cheaper to go up than it is to go out.
Yeah.
And I think if it's, obviously, we still got control over what they're gonna look like.
So, I'll, I'll catch you.
That would give them the opportunity, like he's saying.
I'll catch you a.
Of having a duplex.
Twenty-six percent to the board.
Especially, especially under three acres.
Yeah.
You, you can get more.
So, gentlemen, just so, you know.
We need a vote.
Yes, we do. I'm gonna take this back to the board.
Yep. So, am I gonna make a motion to continue this until next week, to find out what you So am I going to make a motion to continue this until next week to find out what you approved and didn't do, or didn't agree to? What if they only agree to certain ones and not all of them?
Then the board would have to come back, but you've closed the public hearing.
We have.
So it's only deliberation. So, and your motion says that subject to the, you endorse subject to.
All.
The, the changes suggested by the planning board.
Okay, so now my question back to you is.
Then I can't put on the warrant that you endorse it unless it comes back to you.
It's just a. But my question is, is because we talked about 10 different things here. What if you go back and you guys agree on eight, but there's two that you don't?
That I can't put on the warrant that as of Tuesday.
It's not endorsed by the.
I can say the planning board will report at town meeting.
And then I stand up and I say, we endorse these first eight, but we.
And, and then you can say, well, subsequent, the Board of Selectmen came back to us and we agreed, and so the report of the planning board is that we came to an agreement, but it was that after the printing date.
Right. You can schedule a meeting after the fact and say, you know what?
You can.
Fine with it, whatever.
You can report to the, you can hold a meeting up to the moment we go into town meeting.
We're meeting in two weeks, aren't we?
Yep.
Why don't we just put our agenda at two weeks?
I just don't know if it was too late.
No, that's only if there's a change.
Right. Right.
It's going to be, it's, but it's only for the printing of the warrant.
Sure.
I can say that the, the planning board will report to town meeting.
Right.
There's no endorsement, the planning board will report to town meeting. If the Board of Selectmen comes back and says, we accept nine out of your 10 changes, and you look at, and this is why we didn't accept the 10th, and you sit there and say, well, all right, we can accept that, you can report that to town meeting.
So we'll know that by August meeting?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, the only guy we haven't heard from is this guy over there in the corner, he's sitting there quiet.
Just take it in.
You got any opposition or anything?
Nope. Nope, I think this is something the town has needed forever.
Okay.
That's how I feel about it. Can I get a motion?
Not sure how to put this.
Is there anybody else in Zoom there? We were not in public.
No. The, the motion probably would be that the planning board endorse Article 12 with the suggested amendments of the planning board. And then if you, if the amendments aren't accepted, with the amendments being accepted by the Board of Selectmen, if the amendments are not accepted, then I can't put in the warrant document that it's endorsed by the planning board. And it has to then, either I will put, the planning board will report at town meeting.
Give us a.
I'll make a motion that we endorse Article 12 with the list of suggested changes made. And without the suggested changes, well, I'll just say with suggested changes.
With the suggestion change.
I'll leave it at that.
We have a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Call a favor?
Aye.
Aye. Well, we got three, three articles.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Process, and again, I'll take it back to the board, and everybody's intention is to do right by the town and the taxpayer, not any specific developer or any of that, and we're going to put our best foot forward and see how it plays out.
Okay.
As a professional in government, gentlemen, I thoroughly enjoyed this process.
It actually went better than I thought it would.
We almost kept it in two hours.
All right, do you need me further, or can you go back to your agenda?
We, I'm going back to the agenda, we got one more thing, and we are good.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Bob, I appreciate you coming. I appreciate.
Good reading.
I appreciate your, your input. Thank you, it was very, very helpful.
Well, I'm the same, okay?
Sure, a little public service.
Okay, we still got a few things on our end to deal with. Do we have to take a, do we have to make a motion and go back into regular?
We are, aren't we?
Meeting, or are we there? We're there.
We're there.
Okay. Okay, so other discussions and topics, something came up in the last 48 hours that didn't get on the agenda, that's why Ms. Hussein has been patiently waiting here. Okay, so we got a letter from Sin Karfa a couple of days ago. This has actually been something that's been in discussions for some time. I needed to hear back from town administrator, I needed to hear back from town council regarding this. I'm going to read the letter real quick.
Can you, it's not on the agenda, can you take it up?
It's within the, this is something that falls in within the last 48 hours, then you can do it under other business. If any other business that may probably come before the board, not reasonably anticipated within 48 hours prior to this meeting.
Okay.
And I see where you're coming from, I don't think this has much to do with interference with.
The general.
The general public.
Okay.
Dear Mr. Chairman and the Planning Board members, the Sin Karfa Park Drive Project placed a decommissioning bond in July of 2022, valuing of $941,112. The bond was originally placed in May 2022 with the intent of beginning construction soon after. Due to the unseen circumstances, we are still working the planning board and to resolve access issues to the site and do not expect to stop construction this year. Sin Karfa Park Drive LLC will issue a bond prior to construction and receiving a building permit as stated in the special permit conditions. Sin Karfa requests to release the current bond in place, in place via the bond release letter attached. Please reach out with any questions. Regards Sarah Hussein, who is on Zoom. In a nutshell, like she said, they placed a decommissioning bond of almost $1 million, $942,000. They've been paying on that bond, and they don't need to be paying on that bond. They're requesting to pull the bond, move forward with their permitting with conservation and everything else that they need to do. And then prior to pulling a building permit, they would reinstate the bond, because they couldn't get a building permit until then. That could be six months, could be a year, could be who knows how much longer, so they're not paying on that bond for no particular reason.
I agree.
So I would entertain a motion to.
Ask one person? Sarah?
Yes.
So when you finally get to the point of applying for a building permit, and you come back to us, the bond will be for the same $941,112? There will be no change?
That is the intent, yes.
Okay, I just didn't want to.
No one discussed the actual amount while I've been going back and forth with everyone, including Jamie Kelly, but that, that's what was my understanding.
Okay, very good.
Yes, and then the 20-year escalator would start from the point of.
The issuance.
The issuance, yes.
Okay, I'm, I'm perfectly understandable why pay for something that could get you down the road.
Yeah, I'm using it.
Yeah.
I will entertain a motion to rescind the vote to accept the bond and to release the bond. Do I have to take a vote or not, to be honest with you?
With the caveat that it.
They want it released.
They want it released. I'm okay with releasing it, but it needs to be, with the caveat that, that the, that the amount doesn't change.
Correct.
And it's prior to the building, it's.
Reinstated. Reinstated prior to the building permit.
Presented to us for approval prior to applying for a building permit.
There you go.
Why don't you put that on a motion? All right, so I'll make a motion to release the decommissioning bond for Sin Karfa Park Drive LLC solar project for the amount of $941,112 with the contingency that they, they reinstate the same amount when they're ready and submit that to the town for approval, including the planning board and other powers to be prior to applying for a building permit.
I have a motion.
A second there.
Call a favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sarah, you good?
Great, thank you very much. I had one other thing about our project that I wanted to ask, if that's, if you have the time right now.
I don't know if we can.
If it's a simple.
Yeah.
Good ask, but we may not be able to answer.
I might not be able to answer, you can add in two.
It, it's, it feeds into the next meeting that we're scheduled for on the 19th, so we did reach out about the traffic management plan to the DPW, the police chief and the fire chief, but we were still trying to get a, a feedback from the police chief, but we heard back from the DPW who said that they actually don't have the jurisdiction to give us any approval about this. And then the fire chief also had some feedback, but nothing concrete for us to really, you know, he didn't, he didn't approve of anything, he just had some comments. So we're just wondering what you, what's suggested for us to do.
I read the comments from the fire chief, and basically he said that he took out his ladder truck and did the drive that they are suggesting, and the ladder truck did make it, but it was tight, and he's saying that it might be very tight for the trucks that are going down there, but it is possible. He did make the trip with the ladder truck on the route that they suggested. DBW isn't commenting on it, and we're still, they're still waiting on the police chief's comments. What, her question is, is do we just go with the DBW's no comment and just go with the fire and chief and, and police chief's comments?
Well, police chief, police chief hasn't made the comment.
He hasn't, no.
No, I, I, we need to have him weigh in.
Without it.
With, with no comment or whatever he wants.
I'm just saying, as far as the DPW is concerned.
If he doesn't have any jurisdiction, well, but again, I mean, he should make some comment about the road conditions that are out there, so.
Yeah, I was maybe, was it presented properly to him? Because my concern was that you pick a route, and it's a road that's subject to, or was just paved, or is subject to being paved, and it interfered with any future road improvement project. That was what my concern was, not, not an approval, but a, a suggested route.
Okay.
Would it please the board if I reached out to the DPW and expressed our concerns, and then if he has changed his mind, he will reach out to Sarah?
Yeah, you got no, no issues with the road conditions, existing road conditions, you know?
Right, right. Mrs. Hussein, do you have, is that okay with you that I reach out to the DPW and?
Yeah, that, that'd be great if you can just consult with them and see if there's any further comments on their end.
Yeah, he might.
And, and we'll, sorry, go ahead.
He might just say the same thing, he goes, I got no comment, and then we'll run with that. I just want to make sure that he's aware of all points, and then, or he might come back with something, and then we'll let you know what that is.
Okay, and we are still trying to engage with the police chief. We, we sent an email and calls earlier today, so if I don't hear back from them, we will reach out to you.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, good night.
Thank you, you too. Long range planning, there is none, current planning, there is none. Next meeting is Thursday, October 19th. It is a regularly scheduled meeting.
What time?
At 6:00. And if there's any.
Is that our new time?
Our new time is 6:00.
I didn't. I thought it was a specialty.
No, no, that's our new time.
New time.
Is that okay with you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just have to adjust and not forget.
I'll remind you. Is there any, anything else to discuss? I will entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
You got a second?
Second.
Call a favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, thank you.